Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 19, 2013, meeting of the Adana City Council and the Adana Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Rule call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett.
Here.
Member Brindel.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Mayor Hopp.
Here. We have a form of agenda, and I think Member Bennett wanted to amend the agenda to add an item.
Yes, Your Honor. Under special recognitions and presentations, I would like to add a recognition that today is the 150th anniversary of the Gettysburg Address.
All right. We're going to add the Gettysburg Address in under item five, and then I'm going to read the Gettysburg Address.
Well, then, I will move that changed agenda.
And I will second.
All right. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close say nay. Carried. And then the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to remove 4C, please.
4C. Anyone else? With the exception of 4C, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second to approve the balance of the consent agenda with the exception of 4C. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close say nay. Carried. And now, 4C, which is a request for purchase for LED lighting for Edinburgh Park, which is a retrofit. Member Bennett.
Yes, Your Honor. If we could have either Manager Neil, or I guess this is from Tim Barnes, Facility Manager, the staff report, but I see that Parks and Recreation Director Ann Cottrell is here this evening and also Manager Neil, and if someone would like to present this.
How can... Do you want us to do a little presentation on it, or do you have questions about this?
I have a specific question, but I also think it's rather of note. We had a budget work session earlier, and it was remarked upon how with some careful budget examination and a lot of work by staff and some adjustments to the facility, it's actually now operating in the black, and this is the type of change that's been made at that at Edinburgh Park, and so I would appreciate a public explanation of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Bennett and members of the council. This item is brought to you tonight really after a couple of years of research and small starts and stops. It's related to the lighting project at Edinburgh Park. As you will recall, there was considerable plant and tree canopy in the park that we removed as part of a overall management plan and cost reduction strategy. And part of that, removing those plants, there was savings that was associated with taking out some of the plant mass, but there was also savings associated with not having to provide lighting that was designed to keep those plants alive. And this lighting change is a pretty significant project for us. It's a $90,000 project. It has a $26,000 energy rebate for a final project cost of $67,000. But really, the energy savings, we estimate, based on some estimates from XL Energy, at over $50,000 a year, so it's really faster than a... It's about an 18-month, I believe, 18-month payback on this investment. So it's a quick ROI, and not only is it financially beneficial to us in the continued drive to improve the operations of Edinburgh Park, but from an environmental standpoint, it's also a very positive move, and so we're looking for your approval tonight to award this contract.
Thank you. I have just one question, and that is about... I note from the staff report that the LED bulbs and drivers have a 15-year life. Do we know what the cost of replacing those will be after the 15 years? How does that figure into the cost savings that you have described?
I don't know that we've done a prediction. Mr. Olson, our Public Works Director is approaching the microphone. Do we have an idea about what a replacement cost will be 15 years from now?
We do, and we're expecting about an $800 per light replacement cost.
And the years... So that's a 15-year lifespan. As I understand, from our discussion earlier, the current lifespan of those lights is one to two years. Is that right? So it's a pretty significant improvement in even the lifespan of the bulbs.
Thank you.
Do you want to move your matter?
Yes, I will.
Second.
A motion to second to adopt 4C, which is the request for purchase for the LED lighting retrofit for Edinburgh Park. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Carried. All right. And that takes us to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. We do not have any other matters in that portion of the agenda except, as Member Bennett stated, to recognize the 150th anniversary of the Battle of Gettysburg, which now, as of course we look back, was a significant battle and viewed as somewhat critical and a turning point of the war. At the time, I know there was some debate about what the effect of it was as the Union Army was in somewhat hot pursuit of the Confederate Army back in Virginia, but historians seem to think that this was a very, very important battle, and more importantly, I think, the address that followed by President Lincoln regarding... Which is regarded as the Gettysburg Address, and I'm going to read that. No. "Fourscore and seven years ago, our fathers brought forth on this continent a new nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal. Now we are engaged in a great civil war, testing whether that nation, or any nation so conceived and so dedicated, can long endure. We were met on a great battlefield of that war. We have come to dedicate a portion of that field as a final resting place for those who here gave their lives that the nation might live. It is altogether fitting and proper that we should do this. But in a larger sense, we cannot dedicate, we cannot consecrate, we cannot hallow this ground. The brave men, living and dead, who struggled here have consecrated it, far above our poor power to add or detract. The world will little note, nor long remember what we say here, but it can never forget what they did here. It is for us, the living, rather than... Rather to be dedicated here to the unfinished work which they who fought here have thus far so nobly advanced. It is rather for us to be here, dedicated to the great task remaining before us, that from these honored dead, we take increased devotion to that cause for which we gave the last full measure of devotion, that we were highly resolved that these dead men shall not have died in vain, that this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom, and that government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from the earth." Abraham Lincoln, November 19, 1863. It was nice to read that into the record of our city council meeting on this date. Member Bennett, thanks for making the suggestion.
It's almost like church.
I don't think we need to move acceptance of the Gettysburg Address.
No, I don't think so. I think that's far beyond us.
Your Honor, if I might, in the Star Tribune commentary earlier today, they stated that when they were commemorating 9/11 and they were deciding what words would be spoken, that they actually decided that the gathered crowd would recite that as words that were more powerful and appropriate than anyone could come up with in that date.
Thank you for that observation. All right. Well, we turn solemnly, and I guess somewhat more soberingly, to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. That was quite powerful language. There I go. I skipped right past community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and comment on something that's not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing from the audience, we'll move on to reports and recommendations. The first one is Resolution 2013-111, accepting various donations. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second on that resolution, accepting donations on behalf of the city of Adana. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close say nay. Carried. This reporting period, a very generous gift from the Adana Soccer Club to the Park and Rec Department in the amount of $15,320. So that to be used for Alden Park irrigation. Arden Park, I would think. Alden Park?
Yes.
Alden.
Alden Park. All right. Thank you very much to the Adana Soccer Club for the generous contribution to the Park and Rec Department. Next, we have Resolution 2013-113, which Mr. Bittner will be having, which is a request requesting Nine Mile Creek Watershed District participation and ordering professional services for the promenade Phase Four. And Mr. Milner, you have the first part of it, apparently.
Yeah.
All right.
Mayor, members of the council, we're excited about this promenade Phase Four project because it continues to meet many of the city's objectives, such as improvements in pedestrian facilities, greater access to public art, increased stormwater treatment, and collaboration between departments and agencies, such as the Public Works Department, Parks, Community Development, and the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. With us tonight is Kevin Bogelke, the District Administrator with Nine Mile Creek, in case we have specific questions for him. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ross to present the details of this project.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Milner.
Mayor and city councilors, your agenda tonight is Resolution 2013-113, requesting Nine Mile Watershed District participation and ordering professional services for the promenade Phase Four project. I'll briefly sketch out the outlines of the project and then stand for your questions. The project is definitely multi-part, as Mr. Milner explained. Covers a variety of different service levels. Chief among them, Parks water feature, pedestrian trail, and lighting in the fourth phase of the promenade. Currently, the promenade ends and begins a temporary trail about 150 feet south of Hazelton Road, and it picks up again in its permanent concrete near pedestrian traffic circle right near the connection to Centennial Lakes. So we're completing that section to the west of the bike trail, and there's essentially two parts to this project. The first being those park improvements, and the second being a unique opportunity for regional flood protection and clean water treatment through our stormwater utility and through a partnership that you ordered in June, approaching the Watershed District for a partnered project for that stormwater feature. We've gone through a piece of unique stakeholder involvement involving your boards and commissions, getting project-level detail from the developer of the Byerly's site, and continuing on after this meeting, if it's so ordered, to continue to engage with those boards and commissions and project stakeholders. The design elements in the slideshow describe some of the unique features, and I'll jump through now, take a look at the overall concept plan. The master plan overview shown on the screen here, I described the project limits from the north to the south. It slopes gradually to the south, and it has a couple steeper sections near the conceptual or the building shown here. That's part of the 7171 France Byerly's redevelopment, one of their three apartment buildings. The major elements of the plan include a location of upwelling of water, where there will be a permanent art installation, a couple stream crossings or a couple creek crossings, a rapids or a waterfall, a pond with a scenic pond with an island, and then a continuation of the stream and another permanent art installation as well. Intermixed, we'll look through the detail of the north section. There are temporary art installation locations, intermixed, and then there's also intermixed permanent park and swing features for the enjoyment or swinging and leisure activities right near the pool. Moving further to the south, there's a ghosted-out plan, potential expansion for the Macy's redevelopment, whenever that may occur, and then the water from the permanent... From the Parks water feature dives back into the ground here and ends.
Does it die back into the ground there, or is it going into that water or that feature right there? Is that becoming a water feature itself or some kind of a...
It will, and there's actually two reports described, and I was going to get into the stormwater functions next.
All right.
The bar engineering looked at four conceptual underground and above-ground options for the regional infiltration of water to provide additional treatment for volume control, rate control, and flood protection and water quality. Marked Option A was a deep underground infiltration feature. This is one that the Watershed District did not elect. Option B was one that they chose to combine with one of the other surface features, a near-surface infiltrative feature. I've kind of colored that one in green. The last slide will tie it together so you can see how the two different concepts tie together. The above-ground options. C was not elected. It was a series of basins tied together. D, which was elected, was kind of a less formal rock channel with nearby infiltration right near the trail. And to show you how those apply to the Parks concept, the regional infiltrative feature that's near-surface underground will occur on the north half, may occur on a piece of the westerly portion of the south half, and then the stream channel, the rock channel, will be a continuation of that stream theme further down the promenade to the south. With that brief overview, I will stand for questions.
Questions for Mr. Bittner? I've got one for you. So just to make it clear, is it the combination of D and B that the Watershed District favors?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Member Brindel.
Thank you. I just have a question for clarification. On page two of the report and recommendation, there's the financial schedule. Are those project dollars, or are those city dollars that are here? The reason I ask is, looking at the subtotal from the water feature, lighting, and trail, it identifies that part of the monies are coming from the park dedication fee and the rest of it coming from HRA Centennial Lakes Tiff District. So the number that's there, is that the total project number for that, and that it's being parceled out as described, or is that... What number is that?
The cost estimate is subtitled by different project elements and then subtitled by part. So the sum of the three above makes a subtotal A. That's the Parks feature, the electric controls, public lighting, pedestrian walk crossings, and a portion of the water feature.
So 600,000 of that comes from the park dedication fee, and the rest of that will be paid out of HRA Centennial Lakes Tiff District?
Correct.
And the same, then, would be true below, that we're looking at the total of $1,827.350 for this project, and then that comes from HRA Centennial Lakes Tiff District and stormwater?
Well, the 667 of the subtotal B comes equally... Is equally divided between the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District and the city.
Okay, so that number... Okay, so that number is divided equally between Nine Mile Creek Watershed and the city of Adana Stormwater Facility... Utility. And then, project management and construction. So what is the project management and construction oversight role, then? How does that work?
I wanted to note that there were some costs that weren't included in the subtotal, and that in... There was easement costs for the land at 7171 France, and then there also will be additional costs for construction oversight. We discussed how, since there's a potential that city staff can play a portion of that role, we won't know until we get a little bit closer to construction. So in earlier estimates to the park board, I had included some dollars in both of them for that piece. I've taken it out for this estimate because not having a crystal ball on the staff costs, we'll know more when the design is done and we're ready to move forward into the construction in May.
Okay, so what we're approving here is a project for $1,827.350, but there will be some overages due to what you just described?
Yes, this is a concept level estimate, and it will be refined in design, and then it will come back to the council after design in May for project award.
Ah, very good. That is the explanation that I wanted to be made crystal clear, that we are not tied to that figure at this point. What we're looking at is a project that will come in around that figure.
The budget and the concept will sketch out the limits to the design.
Right. Good. Okay. Thank you. That helps me.
Member Bennett.
I'm referring to Member Swenson. If she has a short list of questions, I have a rather long list of questions.
I have a couple main ones. For Byerly's for their park dedication fee, is that their full park dedication fee based on the number of units?
I don't recall the exact number, but it was in excess of $1 million. It was somewhere between 1.2 and 1.4 million, I believe.
That is their park dedication fee?
I have it here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I have it here. Building A, Phase One, 109 units at $5,000 each, that's $545,000. Building B and Building C are both Phase Two, so that's one of the questions that I have on my list because this calls for $600,000 in park dedication fees, but only... But I believe that only Part One or Phase One has been approved and is going forward at this time, and not Part Two. Phase Two is 79 units, which at $5,000 each is $385,000. Building C is 48 units, which at $5,000 each is $240,000. The total altogether is $1,170,000, and I believe that there has been already $183,625 paid back or allowed to be withheld by the developer, by the property owner, for the easement for the pond. Is that correct? I have that document here as well. And that would leave a total of $986,375, but again, only $545,000 less. The $183,625 would be due with Phase One.
Okay, and then the follow-up question I have to that is, if we weren't building this water feature, which is going to be a water mitigation system, what... Where would the runoff go from the Byerly's site?
The Byerly's site has taken most of their water into an underground facility that ties into a storm system on France.
Right.
The roof waters will come to this site.
Okay.
It could work either way.
Okay. I support the water feature, and I support what we're doing for filtration. My question was just, you know, that is... Is this the best use of their park dedication fee for us as a city? One, and it might be. And two, are they... I guess that's it. I'll stop at that. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Member Bennett, go ahead.
I have a set of questions, and some of them pertain to the water handling portions of this, and some of them pertain to the park elements of this. And I guess, going back to the park dedication fees, because we've already had a brief discussion about those, how can we budget as a proposed funding source for something that may or may not be completely realized? How is that money going to be made up if, in fact, Phase Two does not proceed in a tight timeframe with Phase One?
I'd like to use one of my lifelines and phone a friend. I think my answer may be incomplete, but the funding sources are proposed, and it would be up to this body to decide if it ought to be different. This is our proposed funding source. But yeah, there may be some cash flow based on the phasing of the Byerly's site, and then some uncertainty with the total number of units.
Well, again, they're just proposed to be built in phases, and Phase A, which includes Phase One, which includes Building A, which has been approved, is for the 109 units. So the dedication fees in that instance or with that approval are $545,000, but $183,625 has already been allowed to be withheld to acquire an easement from the property owner, from Byerly's, to build the pond on that site. So that leaves substantially less than the $600,000 should this proceed forward in a short timeframe. Okay.
Great.
Moving on. Thanks to Member Swenson for her question about the water. So it's my understanding from the reports that you furnished that what is proposed to be done for the water in the fountain and in the stream is to pump water back from Centennial Lakes to the south, and that's where the water pumps come in the preliminary information that's in front of us. What is the need that's been established for that pumping function? Has there been a flooding of those lakes?
So any development that happens has to meet a certain standard for flood protection and clean water. When Byerly's developed, they chose an underground storage solution. Similarly, if you were to build the park feature standalone, it also would have some sort of stormwater requirement. Generally, that would be fairly modest because it isn't increasing a lot of impervious surfaces. This, for the stormwater feature, is elective, but when you compare it to other costs that the city incurs on our own, for example, the golf dome, you know, we might have paid, several hundred thousand dollars for a certain amount of benefit for flood protection and clean water. We saw this as an opportunity to reach out to the Watershed District, to generate those same clean water and flood protection credits at a fraction of the cost compared to site-by-site redevelopment of facilities. So it is elective, and it's not a normal part of a process to build a park.
So returning to that general area of question again, who benefits, then, from the water credit for this? And yeah, first, let's start with that question.
Right. So that would be up to the city to decide who will benefit. So it will create a bank of credits at the Watershed District, so when the next golf dome or private development comes in, and there's a hardship where they can't meet the credits on site, they would go through the Watershed District, and they could expend or we could sell some of those credits. So if we had a bank of credits and the golf dome had happened after that, we could have potentially done a portion of that on site, spent a fraction of what we did, and applied these credits forward.
Okay. How much of the credits for this water feature are going to be applied or needed for the Byerly's project in Phase One and Phase Two? And how much of the credits are going to be available for the future public or private uses that you've just described?
None of the credits will be required by Byerly's. They've met their own permit requirement, and they've generated surplus, creating their own bank of credits. It's a fraction of the surplus that we're intending to generate with this project. The project credits that would be developed would be split evenly between the project partners, the city and the Watershed District.
So that we have some rough idea about how much... You said more expensive, that it could be more expensive. How much per credit, for instance, did we pay at the golf dome, and how much per credit are the water handling portions of this going to cost us, just so we're comparing the same things?
I've got a slide that I can forward on to. So I generated a cost-benefit comparison versus other published cost benefits of underground facilities. So the one on the top is a similar facility to the So, the one on the top is a similar facility to the golf dome, it's a little bit larger in scale, it costs on the order of, you know, five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars. It generates annual volume reduction of about thirteen acre feet and fifteen pounds of phosphorus. These are the metrics that the watershed districts uses when they measure flood protection and clean water benefit. The cost capacity, so putting one new acre foot of volume control per year online through those standard practices is in the neighborhood of thirty to forty thousand dollars. The promenade concept comes in through efficiencies of time and geometry at a factor of ten less. So when you were to value those credits, you'd generally be comparing them with a standard site-by-site redevelopment, so in Byerly's case or in the golf dome case, they would have to do something and it would cost them a certain amount of money. You could come in with a credit cost less, because you have an advantageous cost of capital that's already sunk and you're providing the credits. Is that answered?
It kind of does, it would have been very helpful to have had this information in the packet that you gave us, so that it could have been digested in a more thoughtful way. I think it's important information, and it's definitely different than what was in the packet. Okay, so continuing, okay, there is reference in the material that Member Brindle has already raised in question, that table, I believe, on page two, back of the staff report, to propose funding sources. There's reference made to funding through the stormwater utility. Who pays, who contributes to that stormwater utility fund?
The stormwater utility charge is a utility-based fund or fee on all homeowners' bills and business bills. It's a pay-as-you-go fund generally to the public.
And do, is there a different rate charged for commercial users, or how are commercially, how are the rates for commercial users determined?
Generally, it's based off of an equivalent unit basis, so if an average single-family home is one unit, a commercial, it depends on both acreage and type of land use, so commercial is thirteen point five times per acre of that residential equivalent unit. So they generally pay a lot more based on their area, because they have a lot more impervious surface.
Okay, thank you. It appears, a couple of questions regarding watershed district participation, and the material at the back in your answer tonight may have given some of the answer, but what is the outcome? I understand this is, if this is approved, it goes to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District Board of Managers. What if they don't approve? What has the city then committed itself to that doesn't necessarily have the participation of the watershed district as outlined in that cost-sharing table?
I have the expectation that the watershed district finds this a very attractive project for their goals, but if they weren't to approve it tomorrow night at their meeting, assuming it goes forward at tonight's meeting, we would come back to you on December third with a different proposal and a different schematic that only did the park portion and likely a different cost. The two different project parts share a lot of costs, and there's some synergies there that provide savings to both. It would be off the table if the watershed district didn't come, because we couldn't build Part A without Part B as they're currently envisioning.
Looking at, this continues with some questions about choice. You've indicated that the watershed district has a preference for Option D combined with, is it Option?
B.
B. And I'm looking at pages fourteen and fifteen of the bar engineering study report, and that indicates to me that the table three, cost comparison of design options on page fourteen, I did a point addition method to kind of analyze all the three different ways that you quantified the cost, and with that analysis, D and B is absolutely the most expensive of the four, of the five options. And then looking at the other benefits and risks on page fifteen, it does look like we get a combination of two high benefits with a medium benefit out of the three possible benefits, but then Option C has a medium and two highs as well. It looks like for construction cost, Option D standalone is absolutely the lowest, so that compares, and, but then looking at the long-term maintenance cost, either Option C or Option D standalone would have medium long-term maintenance costs, and Option D combined with either Option A or B has a medium to high
Yep.
Long-term maintenance cost, and a high risk of public acceptance. So, if, how did that choice end up being made, given those, what looks like not great recommendation from the criteria that you supplied us with?
Right. So, to refer to Table Three, the comparison between all of the different options, I would say that, you know, when you refer it to the table I just showed you that compares, you know, shopping against other potential practices, they're all an exceptional deal. And in Table Four, that came out in the incremental volume reduction in phosphorus removal costs, each one is low. The watershed district had a little bit different thoughts when they were considering the underground versus above-ground. They really, education is a key part of their focus, and having something visible and above-ground in Option D was very important to them. That's why D stood out, although it was a much smaller footprint and didn't provide the level of benefit, so combined with Option B was a much better fit. Comparing Options A and B, when you have, when you're providing that water near the surface, you also get an additional benefit of evaporate transpiration, and you can also displace some of the irrigation water need for the landscape. That was seen as a clear preference of B over A, although it is more expensive. The other risk for, you know, the rehab cost at the end of the service life, when you bury it six to eight feet deep for Option A, didn't seem very attractive compared to Option B, where it's much more readily accessible for long-term maintenance. The other portion about Option C that ruled that one out was, under risks, what would the public acceptance be of, you know, pool rain gardens all over, when it has a much different look than the nearby promenade feature? It just looked out of character, so we thought that that would be a low public acceptance. When you have the standalone, or sorry, the Option D with the rock channel, it kind of extends that theme that the water feature to the north already has. So yes, it is the more, or least cost benefit, it's essentially equivalent in cost to all the other ones, and it met the watershed district's goals.
Is there any concern pumping water up from the lake is to the quality of the water?
Concern, so, when we're trying to assess the risks of a regional infiltrative feature, we generally compare it to the standard practice. I have another slide I'll refer to here. So the Centennial Lakes watershed, right now, through just the standard application of the watershed district's standards, you know, as it slowly redevelops that two hundred and fifteen acres, and then the additional two hundred and eighty-five for a total five hundred acres, it's on the track to provide, you know, those Byerly's-type approaches where it's site-by-site underground infiltration. One of the risks of the infiltration is to the wellhead and the public water supply. While it is our goal to replenish the public water supply and the groundwaters, when you apply it on a point-by-point basis, you know, directly from parking lots with minimal pretreatment, that risk is seen as higher than where you have the pretreatment of, and the very visible surface water in Centennial Lakes being pumped. So we saw the source as less risk than the standard practice applied.
Okay, so you think the water in Centennial Lakes is cleaner than water coming off of parking lots?
Yes.
And has it been tested so that you can tell me that's true?
That's part of the
I mean, I walk that lake all the time, and I like the look of it, but I would never stick my toe in it, nor would I never let my dog drink out of it, so.
It's a tough question, because the answer is both yes and no. So, when you have, you know, direct runoff from a storm event, that can be, you know, very high in a lot of different concentrations of heavy metals, bacterias. The stilling and the settling of the water, it's known to clean it. So, yeah, it's an incremental risk question.
Okay, thank you.
Member Bennett.
Thank you. Returning again to those tables on fourteen and fifteen, your explanations have been helpful, but bar engineering may want to change that, especially the reference to risk and public acceptance
Yeah, right.
Because they're high and they're low, and what's high and low and medium. I read it as high risk, medium-high risk, and you're explaining to me that it was actually the reverse, and that high is actually low, and that explanation would have been helpful. And also the fact that education was important to the watershed district, that would have been helpful, the information to have included in the packet, because otherwise, again, just from the information you provided, Option C looks great. It's the, with estimated design and construction cost, it's ninety thousand dollars less than what you're talking about right now, and up, and over a hundred thousand dollars less than some of the other options, which when you're talking about a million-dollar project is, or two million-dollar project, is still significant. So, a little bit better explanation would have helped, but I'm also, again, looking at Options C and Option D standalone, understanding that the watershed district is favoring one, and we will probably look for more information to them as to why that kind of public expense is the best option. Also, with anything underground, with either the A or B, the deep infiltration or the shallow infiltration, when there's infrastructure such as paths and other utilities above, how was the disturbance factor quantified? Obviously, we've got the very high maintenance cost of the deep infiltration, as you showed on the slide with those channels being quite a bit underground, but wouldn't there be a disturbance factor even with the shallow, which is again Option D combined with B, as evidently preferred?
Yes, and I think you can see with the Table Four just being a comparison in, you know, it's very subjective, so, you know, when you're weighting all of these issues, I think it's important to look at them all, but I think the long-term maintenance cost gets to that disturbance factor.
Medium to high.
Yep.
Who pays that?
I would say that, you know, if the service life of the underground facility required some sort of a maintenance action that was major, that required disturbance, you know, you don't, the users, you know, service, you know, falls during that maintenance, but you're not going to reimburse that. They would, you know, as you dig up those underground facilities, pay for anything that they disturb.
Returning to questions about the use of water from Centennial Lakes, which it appears that these facilities will run with, what happens if the water level in Centennial Lakes is too low?
Right. This was part of my brevity here, so the flood protection function, the underground facility, the infiltrative facility, that one functions on a storm-by-storm basis, so when the system is in surplus, and that's generally every time it rains with a watershed that's this impervious, it functions in that margin. So when there's more water that would generally be discharging downstream, that's when it's working to infiltrate. When it's in drought and it's below its set point, then there's no reason to run the regional infiltration system. There are some additional evaporative losses from the parks facility, and they're continually circulating the water, but they're generally really minor compared to, you know, just the evaporative losses of Centennial Lakes in general. So, yeah, the whole system can be switched off if that evaporative loss is, we're in a real drought.
So that's a protection for the water level in Centennial Lakes and what the residents and recreational users are experiencing and seeing today. What about the features that are being proposed to be built at this significant cost? What are they going to contain if the water level at Centennial Lakes is sufficiently low to prevent, by the terms here, the pumping back into these features?
So, generally, if there is a feature that serves that dual purpose, and it's not just stormwater, but also as a parks feature, the city can apply for appropriation. We have the ability to fill the system with our own public supply. Generally, those things are looked on disfavorably by the DNR when you're essentially just using, having a consumptive use in a drought period. I have a sense that we would be able to make a pretty strong argument if the system already is providing regeneration of the groundwater to the tune of thirty to sixty million gallons per year, which makes up about one to two percent of our annual water use of two point five billion gallons. So I think, we can work around it, I guess there's no fail-safe in there right now if it was in a severe drought. I understand that we have used that appropriations process at least three times in the past, but it's not something that we generally have to do because of the amount of impervious surfaces, the amount of water that comes through.
Have the models for this project accounted for the, as you described, we've had, the weather patterns in the last few years, and I understand that we usually use a longer model for prediction or study, but we appear to be experiencing alternating drought-like conditions, drought, near drought, drought-like, alternating with rainfall in fewer, larger events. How will this system cope with that? You've described that if the water level at Centennial Lakes falls, we do have the ability to tap our own water system, although it would appear to be potable water
True.
in order to run this. What happens with an overflow situation, or again, were the models accommodating for this?
When I've asked myself the same question, I've generally done it in a way that, you know, considers only the change and the effect of the change. I feel that is minor, but that question exists for just Centennial Lakes in general, so I haven't really answered it as part of this project. When I judge that the marginal risk that we create by providing some additional evaporative losses is there. On the climate change, you know, the drought water level spacing of rainfall, we didn't specifically look at Centennial Lakes levels under, under the control point in those drought situations, but I can have them take a look at it during the design to see if there's any exacerbation of that effect. It wasn't something that we specifically looked at when we were going for the benefit side.
Then, just so I can understand, this project in scale with other projects that the city has undertaken, how would you quantify this project in terms of percentage, as stormwater handling, as park, and as transportation?
I'd look at the table and the budget and probably divide it out, I'd say it's probably sixty, forty, parks, trails, and then forty percent stormwater. When you get to the funding sources and you bring in the project partners, even less stormwater, since we're only a part owner of that flood protection feature.
So I understand that we are in the process of preparing, studying to arrive at a parks master plan, but that is not completed at this time, correct?
No.
Yeah, so we don't know where that sixty percent expenditure would fit within a master plan. I'm, that's, by the way, more of actually observation than it is of question. And I can't know the discussions, you referenced the discussions that took place with different boards and commissions, but the minutes of those discussions were not attached to the staff report. I did manage to find the park board minutes, but I did not have time to find the others, and so that also would have been helpful, to have had them attached to the report, even just the relevant portion of those minutes. just the relevant portion of those minutes. And the entire length of this project, just so we can quantify it in our own minds and in the public minds, is about a block?
From the north side to the south side, I think it's between 800 and 850 feet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just want to make some things clear. If you go to page 14, which is one of the tables, Member Bennett was asking about, the design option that the watershed district favors, which is DB, the DB combination. The estimated design and construction cost is 591,000, which as Member Bennett points out, is about 90,000 more than design option C. However, isn't it also fair to state that the design and construction cost option for the DB combination is the second lowest cost of the different options that were posed, of the five options? It's the second lowest cost?
It is, and the lowest is option C, which was ruled out immediately because it was just out of character with the rest of the promenade.
All right. Now, I think in the last column, it says phosphorus removal capacity cost. What does that number mean? It's, for DB, it's 87.52. Would you explain what that number means?
So, we look at two different efficiencies when we're looking at the long-term and the short-term efficiency of putting new infrastructure online. The one that we all talk and understand is lifecycle efficiency, so the total benefit over 20 or 30 years of the lifecycle divided by the total cost, initial capital plus lifecycle. This is essentially just a measure of capital efficiency. So, if I were to spend a dollar today, how much clean water and flood protection benefit can I put online? So, we look at, you know, the annual treatment capacity of this system and we divide the cost by that. So, it's the $600,000 cost divided by the 80 to 160 acre-feet of annual storage gives us the volume capacity cost divided by the 80 or 70 to 90 pounds of phosphorus gives you the phosphorus capacity cost.
So, do we want a higher number or a lower number there?
We want a very low number there. That means we can buy more.
So, this does have the highest number of the five options.
And that, the relationship there is that-
When I say this, I mean the DB combination.
The relationship there is that option D has a lesser benefit for the cost, and that has a lot to do with the fact that it's on the surface and it's meant to look nice. It isn't the option C that was out of character. It's a continuation of that parks theme in the stream.
All right. So, when I go back over to the resolution itself, what you're asking us to do is pass a resolution requesting that Nine Mile Creek Watershed District participate in this project, paying 50% of it. The way I read this resolution and the, and what we are representing by form, by way of this resolution is that this project with the DB combination would improve the present stormwater management in Centennial Lakes sub watershed and create capacity for long-term benefit to the health of the water resources in the city and the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
All right. I see Mr. Bagalke out here, too, and I don't know if you'd want to come up and comment on the DB combination, I guess, is what we're chatting about and the reason why you like that combination so that we understand that well, and is that preference the basis upon which you would participate potentially at a 50% level, depending on the decision of your board?
Sure, thank you. Mr. Mayor, call some members.
Kevin Bagalke, I'm the administrator for the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. As we looked at and considered all the various options, we had looked at initially the four, the four initial standalone items, A, B, C, and D. And in evaluating both what we're getting from a stormwater and a volume reduction standpoint, as well as a public aesthetic benefit, my board said, well, let's look at the possibility of what we would get when we do a combined feature. The reason for the combined feature is when, part of this, we have a significant, in our mind, a real prominent opportunity to showcase how stormwater management can be done in an innovative yet aesthetically pleasing way. If it strictly goes below ground, it becomes out of sight and out of mind, and it becomes really hard for both businesses as well as residents to sort of get a sense of what's happening with the system. And by the combined of using B and D, we're getting both the benefit of the significant subsurface treatment and infiltration, as well as the functional aesthetic benefit of having it at the surface, so that it's a continuation of the surface water features on the northern half, but it becomes a functional feature, not just an aesthetic feature. I think initially, my board's preference would have been to go with B, C, but in recognition and acknowledging the significant work that the city had put in previously and the park department on the promenade design, it really didn't, having the rain gardens and a number of depressional areas didn't really seem to fit. And the rock stream and the surrounding areas seemed to fit more with the landscape design with the work that had previously been done on the promenade work and while still providing some of that, that both stormwater function as well as providing that visual and education benefit.
Questions for Mr. Bagalke by-
I do.
Member Brindle. Go ahead.
Well, I like the educational aspect of this. Is it planned to put some signs out to say this is how stormwater is being managed in this design versus in this area of this design, so people understand what's being done?
Yeah, I think in conversations with, between the Watershed District and city staff, that's very much the intent. It is reflected. We're currently working through, it's not reflected in the resolution, but as part of the following up on the resolution, there would be a cooperative agreement between the district and the city that spells out more details. One of the major pieces in that is joint cooperative efforts between the district and the city to develop education pieces, whether it be through signage or kiosks on the promenade itself, or through brochures and information on each of the respective organization's websites. You know, that's a really key feature. It's not just putting a system in, but it's also informing the public what's happening.
Good.
Thank you. Would you care to comment on the probabilities of your board approving this at the 50% participation level, both from a design and construction standpoint, if we pass this resolution?
I, well, without putting a motion in front of my, in my own board's words, I would say that the likelihood is pretty favorable. I mean, we've already committed the last four months in working, partnering with the city to develop the study and come up with this scenario. And I think, you know, there, we have it on our agenda tomorrow, and I would anticipate that it would be a favorable result.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bagalke. Anything else for Mr. Bagalke or for Mr. Bittner?
No.
All right, thank you, John. All right, good questioning.
I will move resolution number 2013-113.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Your abstention?
I don't know that I have a basis on which to abstain, but I'm just, I am concerned about the amount of money for the small geographic area when we don't know what all of our park needs are, and that's part of why I ask for the percentage allocation between what's park and what's stormwater management. And I guess I was looking for something that had a higher number towards stormwater management because of the size of the price tag and because of the intricacy of the design, so I guess I will have to vote no. Because as a park project, this price tag for this area just seems to me, when we don't know all of our needs, except we know they exist, you know, we know we don't have equity and accessibility of playfields throughout the city, I just find it very troubling that this much money would be spent, almost $2 million, on essentially a block. And so, that's my concern at this time. I have to vote no.
So, we've got, that completes the voting. You got the voting? All right, thank you. Now, we're moving on to city council policy regarding minutes, which is item 7C. And Ms. Mangan, Clerk Mangan, you have this matter.
Thank you, we're in council. At your work session on Article 14, there was a discussion as to the style of minutes and the consensus that a council was to move to a more summarized minute. The staff has prepared the policy that's in front of you, and we'd ask your consideration.
All right. Thoughts regarding this proposal of a policy? Member Bennett?
Yes, your honor, if I might, I remember that at the work session where we discussed this, that we did have some concern about the volume of space that gets occupied by proponent presentations and alike, and so would like to know how those kinds of presentation and that kind of detail is going to be addressed under this policy.
Thank you, Member Bennett. It would be staff's intention that there would be a brief description, then a presentation was made regarding a request for a land development or regarding the, as you had tonight, we would say that Mr. Bittner made a presentation regarding the promenade, but it would not be paragraphs or very lengthy. We would probably keep it to probably a minimum two or three paragraphs.
And I also, Member Swenson, we were, and Manager Neil, I, my recollection of that work session, again, is there was some mention of a minimalist approach, which I believe, Manager Neil, you stated that was followed in Eden Prairie, and I think, Member Swenson, it was actually your recommendation that that be followed.
Correct.
My, so, other than the proponent presentation and that question has been answered, the only thing that I think departs from what we were discussing or augments what was discussed in that work session is the second paragraph, second sentence, since we were discussing more than attributed quotes to council members. We were actually discussing most elements of the minutes, understanding that law requires us to include the who makes a motion, who seconds a motion, and the vote on the motion, and that for clarity, we're also including the language of resolutions and, am I correct, Clerk Mangan, that the language of resolutions will be included as well as conditions on development?
No, there will be the number of the resolutions-
Okay.
-to do as practiced today. It would say a resolution was moved by such and such a member, seconded by such and such a member. The title of the resolution would be given, and if there were conditions, we would list conditions. So, we would not put verbatim ordinance or resolution into any minutes.
Okay. And what about conditions placed on a development approval?
And that's where I do say we would include conditions, because sometimes in the minutes you enumerate conditions that have not been presented in writing.
And I think that that provides some good clarity and accessibility as well.
Member Bennett, I would move this, but if you would be more comfortable if we took out in the second paragraph, from this will be accomplished all the way down to the second to the last part of that sentence where it finishes discussion and debate, and then put a capital on the city will maintain a permanent electronic video archive, I would be fine with that.
I will second that and appreciate the resolution. Thank you.
Could you go over that proposed change one more time, Member Swenson?
Yep, second paragraph.
Yep.
First sentence stays, and starting with this will be accomplished primarily by, will go, and then it will, we will delete all the way until we get to the city will maintain, and at that point, we will capitalize the word "the," and it will become the final sentence, the city will maintain a permanent electronic video archive.
Is the inference, then, that we will be having a city council minutes policy that will leave the inference that there will be numerous quotes by council members regarding their position on different matters?
No, there will be none. We're just taking that as the only reason that the minutes will be shorter that is mentioned, unless you want us to start mentioning all the other reasons the minutes will be shorter. I don't feel the need to just single out one.
Right, no, I agree. All right, understood, that helps. We got a motion, a second with that modification to the proposed policy. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie, I need to go back to resolution 2013-113, which was the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District participation. That was actually a two-part request from staff. The other part was ordering professional services with URS. And as I look at the resolution, the resolution deals only with requesting that Nine Mile Creek Watershed District participate in the design and construction of the project at a 50% cost. There is nothing in that resolution that deals with ordering professional services for promenade phase four, and I think that's an important thing that we wanted to accomplish this evening. So, would there be a motion from someone on council to authorize us ordering professional services?
Isn't that in the HRA?
Well, it's both. We have to confirm it in the HRA.
Okay, well, then I will move the authorizing of professional services in promenade phase four.
With URS?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Now, next is the Blackfoot Pass matter, and Director Teague, you have this issue. And there is a corrected tree and slope preservation easement that's been provided supplementally to the earlier material that you provided, and this supplemental tree and slope preservation easement has been gone through by our city attorney. Roger, you've made some recommended modifications to this document, I take it. All right, Director Teague, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of the council. So, before you is the final plat for the subdivision known as Indian Hills Fourth Edition. This is the subdivision of 6609 Blackfoot Pass. The final plat itself is consistent with the preliminary plat that you approved earlier. And the second piece of this is the tree and slope preservation easement that would be protect that slope area of the southern lot, the east side of that southern lot. That consists of an area of about 70 by 145, and it protects that slope area and those mature oak trees. And as you mentioned, some revisions have been made by the city attorney and agreed upon by the applicant to tighten up the agreement somewhat. So, with that, staff recommends that you approve the final plat this evening and the tree and slope preservation easement as revised.
All right, questions for Director Teague?
I do.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. Looking at Lot 2 and the position of the home on Lot 2 and how close that home is to 6705 Cheyenne Trail, I would request that we clarify what cannot be put in the easement. So, right now, we're clarifying what can be put in the easement. We're saying that, where is it here, driveway? Or is that taken out? Where is that, Carrie? The previous version of this described driveway accessory building and landscaping can be done in the easement?
All buildings have been removed, so that no buildings can be constructed within the easement.
Okay, so where in the corrected easement, does it say anything about a driveway or any hardscape?
It is number 2A.
2A. There it is, there it is. Thank you. 2A. There it is, there it is, thank you.
She just talks about the allowable activities.
All right, all right, same place as it was before. Okay, well, I would like, because this is so close to 6705, I would like to just throw it out, that I want to prohibit a sport court, any lighting, and any amplified music in the easement area. Or really anywhere on the property, but I can only control the easement with this document.
I think we can make those additions.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
So, could we define amplified music? You're saying there's no speaker in the easement?
Right.
Well, in, yeah, one way that it also might work would be on 2A, Member Brindle, and Roger, you might want to opine on this. If we used, if we took that sentence that exists, "Your grantor may encroach within the portion of the easement property abutting Blackfoot Pass and Cheyenne Trail," if we interlineated the word solely for the purposes of constructing driveways, sidewalks, and utilities and landscape features, would that provide the protection we need against anything else going in there, other than the permitted encroachments of driveways, sidewalks, and utilities and landscape features? And if not, what would work so that we have broad language covering and protecting the neighbors regarding the issues that Member Brindle's concerned about?
What's unique about what you're asking is, assuming you're having an event or something, and you want to have a speaker in that area, I don't think anyone would, unless you're very specific, would say you can't, would think you couldn't have a speaker, tape player, or radio in that area. If you really don't want anyone to be able to have a radio or anything like that in that area, I think then we need to specifically say so, because otherwise, I don't think it'd be interpreted that way, if you really want to prohibit that. And I would also suggest it's really difficult to word things from the, on the fly up here. So, if you have specific issues that you want to make sure that you can't do something, be this telling us, and then we will incorporate them in.
Okay, well, I've actually talked with a few people about ways to control how a preservation easement is used, can be used, and cannot be used for the protection of neighbors when homes are close together. And the sport court idea is such that the bouncing basketball, the, that kind of thing, if that's not desired in the area, it can happen on the driveway, it can happen on the other side of the house, but what I want to prevent from happening is that it happens on the side of the house that abuts the property at 6705.
So, we're clear, this easement says you can't touch the slopes, you can't alter the slopes.
Right.
So, this, I don't know, could you have a sports cloak, sports court without altering the slopes?
No, no.
So, then, that's, this says you can't have it, then, because you'd have to alter the slopes.
Right, but-
I thought you were worried about the strip of land between the street and the house.
I'm worried about the strip of land between 6705, Cheyenne Trail, and the new home on Lot 2. And the 10 feet that we can-
In the 10-foot easement strip?
The 10-foot, the 10-foot easement that we can control between those two pieces, between those two homes.
I want to look at the language of the resolution here.
If you want us to specifically say no sports courts in the easement area, we certainly can say that.
Okay, no sport, no sport court, no lighting. Those two, I think, are the most important.
But as I understand, that's in a 10-foot strip that runs along the person to the south's property line.
Right.
So, it can come up to that 10-foot strip, it just can't go in that 10-foot strip.
Right. It just keeps it that much farther away from 6705.
Yeah, but you can't design, you can't alter the slope of that property based on the easement. You can't build a sports court without flattening the land, so, I mean, I'm perfectly willing to put it in, but I don't see how it could be built based on the current
I just want, I just simply want a permanent, prevent it, that's all.
You know, we were, didn't we face this same issue on the Merrill Lane property?
We did.
And we were going to put in, we were going to put in that landscape buffer zone, and we only permitted landscaping in that buffer zone, so why can't we deal with that issue, this issue that way, and say that the only thing that can be done in that 10-foot buffer zone is to have landscaping?
Yeah, we could. That would be far preferable.
So, if they were to put up a fence, they would have to put it in 10 feet inside their boundary line?
Just so we're clear, we have an exception for the driveway. You can't put the driveway in.
And I have a question about fencing.
Good, Member Swenson, go ahead.
If I own this new Lot 2, and wanted to put a fence along my property line, based on this document, if it were passed, where could the fence go?
Where's the language that deals with the 10-foot strip?
Well, 2A, isn't it? How you encroach in the easement?
And right now, what's allowed is the driveway, sidewalks, utilities, and landscape features.
Yeah, and we'd have to allow the driveway since the easement goes across the front of the property. And we have to allow sidewalks, and we have to allow utilities, then, because it goes along the street. All right, and landscaping. So, if we said for the sole purpose of constructing driveway, sidewalk, and utility and landscape features, that would cover it.
Well, I think the only, the only leg of it that you worry about is that south leg of that property, isn't it, that lot, you know, from the east lot line on, where it says St. Albans Edition, running over to Cheyenne Trail?
Yep.
So, it's that leg that you worry about. To me, it seems like a good solution to that would be landscaping only in that 10-foot buffer zone.
Along the, along the south.
Along the south side.
Along the south.
Whatever the, whatever that run is, however you legally describe that.
Okay, so, we could add a sentence, then, and just say along that south, all that's allowed is landscaping. Adding a sentence to 2A?
Yeah, let me find that attachment here.
I said I'm talking about 2A. No, I didn't. I had it at 2A.
So, is the fence landscaping? Should I ask in a different way?
Well, let's go back to this language of 2A. "Your grantor may encroach within the portion of the easement property abutting Blackfoot Pass and Cheyenne Trail." So, the only place they can encroach is where it hits the street, either street, for purposes of constructing driveways, sidewalks, utilities, and landscape features. Isn't the inference that they, otherwise, they can't encroach? And isn't that, isn't that the only place we want them to encroach, where the property meets the street?
Correct, so.
So, are we worrying about nothing?
Well, maybe we are, okay.
Because the way the language words on, or is worded on 2A, they can only encroach within that portion of the easement property abutting Blackfoot Pass and Cheyenne Trail, and then solely for those purposes that are described.
But it doesn't say they can't encroach along the south side.
No, they can't encroach on any of the other parts of the easement. And there's two, there's the north, and there's the south.
It says two, it says allowable activities within the easement property. Exhibit A describes the easement property, and then, and then 2A is the only thing you can do that's allowable as an activity in the easement property, and that is to construct a driveway, sidewalk, or utility, and put in landscape features in that portion of the easement property that abuts Blackfoot Pass and Cheyenne Trail.
Okay, so that, that prevents an encroachment along the south, then, in your opinion?
It seems to me that it would. Is that what, the way you read that, Roger? I mean, you crafted it.
Oh, actually, real estate lawyer in my office prepared this, but let me just walk through it, so we understand it. The prohibition, what is prohibited, is in paragraph 1, A, B, and C. That is what is prohibited, which basically means they can't change, they can't disturb the slopes or harm the trees. That's the basic thing that's prohibited.
Or deposit waste?
Or C, the basic, B, A, B, and C, that's what's prohibited. Now, the exceptions, we allow an exception to the prohibition. The exception to the prohibition is A. They can disturb the slopes or remove trees for the purposes of driveways, sidewalks, utilities, and landscape features.
But that's only along Cheyenne Trail and Blackfoot Pass?
Yes, on that part, yes. But you could do things in there, I mean, if it's a lot, this ordinance wouldn't prohibit, for example, doing something in the easement area that did not touch the slopes, did not harm a tree. If you can do it without cutting the slopes or harming a tree, then this doesn't prohibit it.
So, you could put up a fence along your property line?
If you don't change the slopes, and you don't take down a tree or harm a tree.
Member Bennett?
Attorney Knutson, is my understanding correct, that should fence construction or anything require work with a tree, there is the permit process required by A, 1A?
Yes.
Which is the last sentence or phrase of 2A, correct?
Yes, you could, if you comply with 1A, you could take down a tree.
Okay, thank you.
Member Swenson, this fence issue that you've been alluding to, were you thinking that it would be wise to have some language in there that, no?
No, I just wanted it defined.
Well, based on what the, based on what the city attorney says, it seems to me that on the property line, or whatever the code reads, they could construct in that 10-foot easement a fence that did not harm a tree or disturb the slope.
Correct, that's six foot tall from the front corner of the house, all the way around the back. And four foot tall once it gets past the front of the house.
All right, so I'm comfortable that this prevents the sport court, but it doesn't prevent lighting, in the same way it doesn't prevent a fence. So, I just don't want 6705 to have a light visible on that side.
Well, they may, they probably will have. I mean, from the house.
Just from the house.
Don't you think when lights are on at night or something?
Well, yes, but I don't want it in the easement. I don't want it any closer.
Physically in it or shining into it?
Standing physically in it.
Including landscape lighting?
Mm-hmm. So, that's what, that's, you know, how it ought to be worded, but that's what I would like added.
For my clarity, is that landscape lighting anywhere in the, around the whole property, any part, anywhere in the easement, or just on the one side?
For my purposes, along the south side, abutting 6705.
So, to this tree and slope preservation easement, in the Section 1A, B, C, that deals with prohibited activities, you would add D?
I would add D, yes.
Which would be no artificial lighting is permitted in the area of the easement?
Between?
Adjacent to-
6705.
The property located at 6705.
Mm-hmm.
Is that Blackfoot?
Yes, no, no, that's Cheyenne, Cheyenne Trail.
Mayor, if you'd give us some, if you choose to add that addition, which should give us some discretion to word that, because we want to use a legal description, not that reference.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, the notion is under 1D to add language to the effect that no artificial lighting shall be allowed within the easement property, within that portion of the easement property abutting 6705, whatever the legal description is. Got that, Roger?
Yes, we will, we'll tighten up the wording. I got it.
Okay, with that addition, are there any more questions?
No, thank you very much.
You want to move this matter?
Yes, please.
Member Brindle?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay? Carrie?
Just to be clear, you're approving the plat, final plat, and the tree and slope preservation easement?
That's right. Resolution 2013-114 involves approving the final plat and the tree and slope preservation easement with the addition at 1D of the artificial lighting provision, prohibition. Member Bennett?
Your Honor, on 1A, this is minor, but when it is, when the language is cleaned up or the new 1D is added, trees should be corrected, trest to trees in the second to the last line of A. And 2 has only one sub-A, and I don't know how that, I mean, if that's appropriate, and they're contemplating the addition in the future of something, otherwise, 2 might be just in and of itself without a sub-A, because there no longer is a sub-B.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, when they took out two B, they should have just gone to two. All right. I think that does it. Johnson, thank you. Mr. Wanniger, thank you. And greetings to your dad for us. Glad we got this, through this for him. Thank you. It's okay. Good luck, Mr. Johnson. All right, now, we got Mr. Nundorf going to talk to us a little bit about needing some professional services for parking.
He has his pen raised.
I'm going to do this one tonight.
All right, okay, very good.
Mayor and members of the council, this is probably an item that should have been on our consent agenda for tonight, but we didn't have it slotted in the right spot. What we're asking for tonight with item seven E is your approval for a new agreement with Kimley Horn to do parking ramp inspections for us for a five-year time period at a cost of $33,000, $33,200 over a five-year term. They're certainly qualified for this kind of work. In the past, we'd had Walker Parking Consultants do this. This is a state, this is a statutory requirement that we have our parking ramps inspected on an annual basis, and we recommend you award this contract tonight.
Motion second on the authorization for professional services for the mandated parking ramp inspections using Kimley Horn. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close say nay. Carrie? I just buried my agenda. Here it is. And correspondence petition. I noticed there were a few additional pieces of correspondence on the diocese evening. I assume that was the balance of it.
It was.
All right. And then aviation noise update. We've got a couple of council members that had some national input over the past week or so. And Member Swenson, start with you on that.
Well, I had the great pleasure of going to Seattle to, on a plane to listen to a day-long conversation about aviation noise. I thought that was sort of interesting. And there were a number of different takeaways. Member Bennett and I sat through the presentation alone together. Some of my best takeaways from this is obviously the information that Gen X GPS technology, which is part of what they're trying to have working as part of ARNAV, has to be installed in all planes by 2020. The interesting thing is that for noise abatement, planes really can't be retrofitted. We had a great presentation by Boeing, and old planes are old planes and you can't really make them any quieter as far as changing their engines.
This whole notion of noise kits?
Yeah, there are no noise kits. And that Boeing, and that currently Delta uses mainly old aircraft in the MSP airport. The other part is that sound mitigation will never get to Edina. There are new rules now that the FAA has installed. The Boeing, our Boeing representative did say that the concept of fanning out ARNAV tracks into a broader fan can work and it does not negatively affect gas, nor does it increase noise by fanning them out. And we also had a very interesting guy from Georgia who uses current technology iPhones and iPads and laptops because you can literally now figure out what noise is coming from what particular airplane and how it's made and what kind of airplane it is. He's using it because he wants the airplanes to stay in tracks and not bring in noise. And he wants the tracks because they have a lot of industrial area that they can fly over. And that the newer planes have the newer GPS techniques that ARNAVs and a lot of the older planes don't. So my hope is by 2020, if they can retrofit GP, new Gen X GPS into all the old planes, that we can at least get some newer planes. Interestingly enough, I flew out on a 757, an old loud plane, and I flew back on a 757, so. There is another, we have another opportunity though for legislation that noise will support. And I have, along with Member Bennett, the Legislative Priorities Recommendation Form that I think we probably need to do a short workshop on and put in a request to meet with our congressional representatives and senators and with noise next spring in Washington, DC in March to forward our concerns and our solutions, potential solutions.
Thank you both for attending that very important meeting in our city. So, Member Bennett, your, your update, please.
Well, I appreciate Member Swenson's comments, and I will be actually preparing a written report because I attended some other events. I stayed for the full five days and will be preparing a written report to share with the council and also with the public. It will be part of the public packet and other folks can read about it as well. I also attended a rail issues meeting on Thursday afternoon that drew about 70 people and the National League of Cities promises to take that up as more of an issue next year. And that focus, some of the issues raised in the room were noise, but also safety of what's being carried and also where people can and can't, largely can't, have impact in terms of freight rail issues. But there is hope that by presenting a unified front or in a nationally focused front, as does this National League of Cities group, and then also we are working to do within this area, that's the best path to take forward. And also this involvement with the National Aviation Noise Lobby, which is an affiliate of the National League of Cities, again, appears to be one of the best paths for us to follow. Tomorrow is the regular meeting of the Noise Oversight Committee that will take place at 1:30 in the afternoon at the Metropolitan Airports Commission General Office at 6040, 28th Avenue South. It's the 28th Avenue exit from Crosstown Highway 62. And the items on the agenda for tomorrow include some regular updates, review of 2014 Capital Improvement Program projects. There is a new method of reporting aircraft density. In the past, people who've gone online have seen green and red lines, one representing departure, one arrivals, that can just about obscure every other feature in the map. And they are now moving to color gradients that start at white for less dense over flights and work their way toward orange and red for more dense over flights. And that information also is available online. They are breaking it out for the September reporting and will be following that method in the future. It does show what people have, it confirms what our residents have been experiencing in terms of some density of flights, not at the extreme end, but definitely perceived well in the middle, in the southwestern quadrant of our city, in the southeastern quadrant, particularly along the Crosstown Corridor and also in the very northeast part of the city. Then there also will be a review of some research projects that were referred to, mentioned in Seattle. There are several bodies that have been conducting studies. One is housed at MIT. There are other universities largely in the southeast that have been involved. And there will be, there is extensive written material in the agenda materials on those reports, and we will see at what length they are reported on tomorrow. There's also a very cursory review of the October 22nd Public Input Meeting that's in the packet. It refers to residents from Edina and Minneapolis speaking. How, there also were residents from Richfield and St. Louis Park who spoke at that meeting. And it references concerns expressed about the implementation of ARNAV. There also were concerns expressed about current operating conditions and impact from those conditions. The final item on the agenda is a review and approval of the NOC work plan for 2014, a review of the NOC accomplishments for 2013, and an announcement of the meeting dates and topics for the next year. The next, January 15th will be a regular NOC meeting, and then they will continue in March, May, July, September, November with the public input meetings alternating. There is a public comment period at the end of the meeting, but as I've explained before, a person has to be sponsored by a sitting member of the NOC in order to comment, and that recommendation has to be seconded by another member of the NOC for someone to comment at that meeting. There was, there's been very, very good turnout at the, the evening public input meetings, and I hope that that will continue. And in addition, that people continue to report noise as they experience it and continue to contact their elected representatives.
Thank you. All right. Thanks for those good updates. Member Rendell, council comments?
All right. I have a couple. The other, let's see, about a week, October 23rd. I went to, let's see here. I went to the commuter choice awards. And this event was put on by commuter services and a variety of organizations. Our own Mark Nolan was a judge, who, he's our transportation engineer, and he was a judge in this. But it, it's commuter choice awards, and basically these awards, ideas on how to facilitate cycling and walking as easy, safe and healthy choices for transportation, getting through, getting around, specifically around Edina. The importance of collaboration and the roles of other professions have in supporting getting around the community. And the commuter choice awards recognized several organizations in the areas of building owners and management companies, government entities, employers, individuals and organizations. And in the government entities, we were nominated for the Bike Boulevard Project. And we won an award. And in that, in that category, the other nominees were the City of Fridley, Anoka County State Health Improvement Program, the City of Richfield, the National Park Service, who also won because it was a tie, and then the Veterans Administration Healthcare System in Minneapolis. And they have a nice description of what each, each of the nominees did in their, in their area. City of Richfield, it's Penfest and supporting bike commuting. The employers that were, and this is a long list of employers, but Quality Bike Products, you probably aren't surprised, was the winner in that category because they're kind of out in front of everybody and that's what they do and who they are. The individuals, and these are individuals within corporations as well as volunteers. A woman at Target won, and she helped develop in conjunction with other Target bicyclists, a state-of-the-art bike facility for Target, I have to read this, this is amazing. Bike facility within the building for Target corporate employees in downtown Minneapolis. Her efforts resulted in a facility that features secured storage for 175 bikes, showers, lockers and changing areas, free towels, onsite mechanics and free seminars demonstrating bike tune-ups, which is really cool. It's kind of a game changer for downtown businesses. Once, once a business the size of Target starts doing that, the other businesses take notice. But then organizations, and in the organizations, there are community councils and a variety of organizations, churches, Minneapolis Media Institute, St. Paul Open Streets, Transit for Liveable Communities won. And they're nearly finished with their lifespan. So they have a six-year program established in 2006, so, so they're nearly, I mean, this was kind of a, a great hurrah for them, kind of ending their, their existence. And, and then there were some, some legacy awards for van pools, programs for employers, et cetera. But I said a few words, I've said more than a few tonight, but I said a few words at the event talking about the process of re-engineering a city that was designed for the car and the challenges that go along with that. And the monumental task that really is involved with that. And that over time, you feel like you do a project at a time and you're making a little progress, but when you look back and you realize how many miles of sidewalk and bike route, Bike Boulevard that has been established, you really have made some progress in the last few years, and that, that helps you move forward. And there must have been 250 people from all these organizations, all deserving. Anybody could have walked away with this award because all of these projects really are, are laudable. But I think it illuminates the awareness, the elevated awareness to all of that. And I know, I know we're getting, we're getting letters right now about not needing a sidewalk here or not understanding that this, that, that maybe this sidewalk seems like it's a sidewalk to nowhere. But if you raise the lens a little bit, you realize that there really is a network. And if we do it right, we can, we can educate people to what the destinations are and make it clear that that piece belongs to that piece which gets you to Garden Park, which gets you to Countryside School, a variety of things. So, and I, I just think our message has to be right so that that, everybody understands that.
Well, on that issue, I will tell you that, maybe I did, but I didn't tell the other council members, I was coming past the offices of Deed in the Skyway system in St. Paul, and a guy stopped me and said, hey, congratulations on your commuter choice award. And he said, your councilperson did a very nice job. So I pass that along to you.
Thank you.
And others that should know that you represented our city well.
Well, thank you very much.
And you, I see you have the, the award next to you.
I, I do. It's a lovely piece of glass that says commuter choice awards, 2013, Government Entity of the Year, City of Edina. So, I don't know.
It could be better than being Government Entity of the Year.
I think so. Absolutely. It's a field of money. Let's see here. I saw a thing go by, maybe an email, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency announces $54 million in affordable housing awards. Being in the award zone, I'm thinking, how can we get an award for an affordable housing initiative? I think it's a challenge for Edina because what is being created by all of the wonderful many millions of dollars that are being spent in our city is not affordable housing. But yet, we really need to keep our focus on making sure we have affordable housing available for those who want it, need it. And so I, I'd like to, I'd like to see if we can meet that challenge because we're going to be asked to and we're probably going to be required to. And if we have a project we want Met Council support on and we haven't met that challenge, we might not get that support.
One place we can start is on the project at 65th and France. Manager Neil and I had a conversation about this.
Okay.
We told them we wanted to be 10% affordable over there for seniors, and they're having a great deal of difficulty apparently getting this figured out from a financial standpoint. So I think Manager Neil's going to talk to Guy Peterson over at the Met Council, who's in charge of the Affordable Housing.
Okay.
Department over there and see if there are some funds available to assist us in getting that project moving.
Well, that would be important. You know, you can be independently wealthy as a senior, but that goes fast when you are in assisted living and memory care. I mean, that's $4,000, $5,000 a month easily. And, and that, that drains what was a wealthy pile of cash very quickly. Independent living is $3,000 a month, so it's probably higher when you escalate. The other thing, I attended a lunch last week. Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative had 850 people at a lunch, a fundraising lunch last week. I attended with a group from Edina Community Lutheran Church, who are very well represented there. And one fact that I heard that day that is extremely troubling, one in nine students in Minneapolis schools is homeless. I mean, this, it's hard to believe. It's just hard to believe that in Minnesota that's true. It's just hard to believe that in Minnesota that's true. They're couch hopping, they're sleeping in shelters, and they're sleeping in the woods along Highway 169, probably not very comfortable these days. I don't know where that is. I know where 169 is, I'm trying to figure out where they are. But I'm thinking back a couple of weeks to when we had our work session with the Human Services Task Force and the Bridge for Runaway Youth. 63 Edina residents, they served in 2012. When I was on Human Rights and Relations Commission, it was two. It was two. Sometimes it was zero. And maybe that was just cases that weren't reported, whereas now they are reported. But the City of Edina has 63 runaway youth who could be, I don't know, I mean, it's different, but it's not. The Bridge, their goal is to reunite a family after a crisis that has caused a young person to take off. So, but truly, so, I mean, there are a lot of ways to work on the issue of youth homelessness. There are a number of organizations, The Source, Oasis for Youth, Beacon, that are all addressing that problem. But to hear the number one in nine, I think that those of us who can ought to really start getting our heads around this and seeing if we can't help out with this in some way because that's just startling. And it's our neighboring city. So that's what I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, there's one piece of paper on the dais that's a correction to the accepting various donations. And that is, that, hmm?
We did that. We read off the corrected version.
Oh, you did read off the corrected?
We passed the corrected version.
Excellent. I wanted to make sure we saw that. All right, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Bennett.
Okay, thank you. I served the summer on two metro cities' communities, and one of them was transportation and the other was transportation and general government, the other was housing and redevelopment. And one of the topics that we covered this summer, very, very good presentation, was how communities can try to support already existing but not governmentally supported relatively affordable housing or affordable housing in their community. In other words, apartments, homes, townhomes, condos, where the rents happen to be affordable. And they are working with the Met Council to try to have that, establish some standards for quantifying that and have that be counted towards cities meeting their goals, on the theory that there is much more of it than is going to be able to be built with the available funds. And also, from an environmental perspective, as we learn in other cases, it is often much more effective to renovate or maintain something that already exists than it is to build from scratch. We certainly don't want to slow down the building from scratch, but as Member Brindle pointed out, often that's at a price point that's not going to be affordable. So it's certainly another option and one that I think we and others should look more into. I was very grateful to be invited to the Veterans Lunch on Monday, November 11th, heard Member Brindle playing and directing the rotary band, and many members of our community there, including our former park director, Bob Coteen, a veteran, also our state legislative representative, Ron Earhart, also a veteran. And it was a very, very nice event. The keynote speaker was retired General Denny Schultstedt, also a resident, and he spoke. It was a wonderful speech, great event. Also, very grateful to have been able to attend the National League of Cities Conference and want to thank the city and the people of the community for sending me. That written report will be forthcoming. And my big take, I focused on attending sessions and discussions on transportation, including air, rail, bike, and pedestrian, and also development, human services, and then changing demographics. And we'll bring forward a brief report, it won't be a book. And one big takeaway from the week is that to work effectively for our citizens, we will need to partner with other cities, both nearby and nationwide, which I believe we are setting out to do, but this will be another way that we can do that. I brought a visual with me tonight. It is a public review draft of the Lyndon Hill Small Area Plan. I know that we've been working to on small area planning in our city. Minneapolis's city council has adopted or approved 43 of these that have been developed in different commercial areas and neighborhoods, and I will give it to Clerk Vangin and ask that copies be made for council members to be included in their next packet.
Thank you. That'll be interesting to read.
I am making a repeat announcement for Founder's Day, which is coming up on Thursday, December 12th, with Tours of the Cahill School and the Grange beginning at 5:00. A reception at City Hall with an exhibit on human rights milestones from our Human Rights and Relations Commission beginning at 6:00. A concert by the Edina Corral at 6:30, a mini-concert to hopefully bring folks into the chambers, where the formal program will begin at 7:00 and run for no more than an hour. I am getting RSVPs from the Founder's descendants and have heard from about 25 so far. We sent personal invitations to 61 of them, and looking forward to a great evening. Again, 125 years of history in 45 minutes or less, followed by cake back in the lobby. So that will be the closing event of the Quasqui Centennial Year. Then finally, I want to speak very briefly about 3944, 49th and a Half Street, and then have a request for staff. And I want to acknowledge that this body has spent years studying the parking issues at 50th and France and tried to arrive at publicly responsible solutions that are both convenient and cost-effective, and that the identification of that publicly responsible solution was expansion of the north ramp on 49th and a Half Street to the east and west. We were able to purchase the Edina Realty Building to the east, and we approached the owners of the property to the west when we learned that they were retiring and closing their business. We have shared the appraisals of value with Mr. and Mrs. Park, the property owner, that we have obtained, but we have never seen their appraisals upon which they are basing valuation. It now appears that they have been given a purchase offer. We have not seen it, I understand, but that we have heard that they have been offered an amount that they think the property is worth. And I'm asking staff to determine whether or not this is true. Because if it is true, then the land has somehow increased in value beyond a cost that I think would be publicly responsible to pay for parking. And if it is true, I would move that we, the city ceases effort to purchase the land. So the request that I have is that staff determine whether or not, in fact, a purchase offer has been made for that property in the amount that has been mentioned, and that we then be able to take action when that is determined. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Swenson.
Wanted to point out and remind us all that we have a extra meeting in December, December 10th, which I, of course, didn't have on my calendar, and it's on a Gopher basketball night, I'd like to whine about that. But it's at 6:00, so just make sure it's on your calendars. It's when we're doing street reconstruction. So it's in between our two regular Tuesdays. And then put in a request that we look at an ordinance drafted by our city attorney, maybe in the same vein as the one that he did for Plymouth, on e-cigarettes. And they're used publicly in our city and our ability to prohibit their use in our public spaces.
Just one correction. You heard someone else mention the City of Plymouth.
Plymouth? You did not do Plymouth?
They don't have one. I'll get you an ordinance. I don't want someone from Plymouth to hear this and say, what?
Okay. Sorry. I misquoted you. You said you had done one. I did, I did misquote. That is true. I did quote Manager Neil. So I'll withdraw the name of the other suburb, but you did say you had done one or two already.
We'll get you an ordinance.
So whatever one or two you've done, I would like to have a discussion about putting, installing that as a new ordinance in our city. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Member Bennett, you forgot one thing that you worked on very diligently, and that was the Quasqui Centennial Writing Awards, at least as part of the overall coordination. You were there last night in attendance, and I don't know if you'd want to comment on that as well. You got there earlier than I did, but I got to hear a couple of the award winners, but not all of them.
Well, it was a contest that was actually sponsored by Friends of the Edina Library and the Edina Community Foundation and the League of Women Voters. And the Quasqui Centennial Committee was also a participant. Those four entities provided people who were the readers to read the submitted essays. There were two honorable mentions and then two, a second-place winner who won, I think, $250, and the first-place winner won $500. And the first-place winner wrote an essay on Sarah Barrett, who, as it turns out, was not only the owner of that wonderful, beautiful house on 50th Street, and the co-builder of it, but also a very well-respected, active member of the Grange locally and at a state and national level. So the writer is a lawyer, and the document is footnoted, and it will be available on the Edina Historical Society website for people to read, as well as the other three winning essays. So encourage people to read those and get a little bit more information about. The other three were largely about growing up in Edina. You missed perhaps the reading about the resident who used to hide his bow and arrow and shotgun under canoes near the creek. And he and a school buddy as sixth graders shot a deer down by Nine Mile Creek.
Ah, the good old days.
This was back in the late '40s. So we had childhood in the '40s, '50s, and '60s in Sarah Barrett, and those were the winning essays.
Good. Thank you. I did get there a little bit late last night to the writing awards because I was attending the National Merit Scholar Reception over at Normandale. And we had 17 National Merit semifinalists, reminding you that we are the smallest big school in the state. We also had 22 National Merit Commended Scholars. So it was really enjoyable. One of the most enjoyable things is when the kids come up to introduce themselves, they kind of give passing reference to their parents in the audience, but they then bring a teacher with them that they have stand up, and then they talk about why that teacher was so important to them. And some of those are really stirring, those comments, and all of them important and great recognition for the teachers all the way through the system. I'd say half of them are grade school teachers and half of them are middle school and high school teachers that the kids had. So it's a wonderful event. Back to November 6th, I met with Representative Hornstein from Minneapolis on Southwest LRT. More on that to come. Trying to encourage Mayor Ryback and incoming Mayor Betsy Hodges to go with me to meet with the head of the TCNW Railroad, see if we can talk about this relocation, freight relocation, a little bit more earnestly, directly with the president of the railroad. We may end up back in the Kennelworth corridor, but we want to make sure we make every effort to find an alternative location, other than the one that was proposed, of course, on a two-story dike through kind of the middle, heart of St. Louis Park, which was a bad idea. The 7th through the 9th was the Edina Film Festival. Special thanks to John Swan and that entire committee of volunteers that were there every night for the festival. My wife and I were there a couple of nights, culminating with the showing of The Big Lebowski on Saturday night at 8:00, and quite a few people showing up in costume, a couple of guys that looked eerily like The Big, like The Dude. And you couldn't help but think that their lives were much like The Dude's. So it was fun to see all those people in costume. But the folks that worked on the film festival did just a terrific job. And thanks to the sponsors as well. On the 14th, I went to the Starbucks ribbon cutting, the new Starbucks out near Centennial Lakes, near the shops of Centennial Lakes. Beautiful new building, company-owned store. Would encourage people to stop there and meet with the people and get themselves a beverage. It was terrific use of that idle space in that open area by Old Navy. It really brought a lot more vitality to that part of our town. Over at the TAB, we're working on, there's a group of us working on the, what we call the regional solicitation, trying to figure out how we're going to recommend to the full TAB, how that thing should be reset for, you know, how we spend that $90 million or so that comes in every year from the Federal Highway Trust Fund. That was on the 15th as well. As was the Veep Annual Gala. They had it out at the new Radisson Blue. I attended. I was surprised I was the only mayor there, nobody from Bloomington, nobody from Richfield. And the demands at Veep are just increasing exponentially here with the change in federal law that reduced by $36 per family of four, the amount of subsidy that they were receiving around the country. The demand at the food shelf is just tremendous. So let's keep Veep in mind as we move forward. And they're moving into their new facility relatively soon, and they're going to need it. They're going to need that capacity, and they'll be in there with Hennepin County sharing the facility in South Bloomington. Then also that same day, I went to the farewell luncheon for RT Ryback, put on by the Minneapolis Chamber of Commerce up in the IDS on Windows, the Windows of Minnesota. RT was in his usual fine form, speaking from the stump about the future of Minneapolis and the region, endorsed again the need for Southwest LRT, so we need to make sure that we keep that on track. And then on the 16th, which was Saturday, we did a ribbon cutting over at the golf dome. Manager Neil and I were there, Ann Catry and a bunch of other folks. Ann Swenson was there as well with her granddaughter, Grace. We got Grace into a photo, I think, as we cut the ribbon for the new facility. And then that night, I had an interesting experience. My wife and I went to, we got invited on behalf of the city to the Lake Hurriet Masonic Lodge, 100-year celebration of service to humanity, and of course, that's what they've done all these years. Their lodge is down near 44th and France on the Minneapolis side of the street, but quite a few Edina members. And that was an enjoyable experience as well, and I thank those folks for including us. It was a pleasure to be there. As the toast went on, and there are many of them in this French military style, I did make up a toast, warning them not to imbibe too much so that they had to visit with the Edina boys in blue, and had a good way of making that rhyme, which escapes me right now. Anyway, and then yesterday, I was on a Sustainable Transportation Finance Workshop Panel over at the State House. I was on a four-person panel on mileage-based user fees with Bernie Leader, who used to be in the legislature, was a rep from Crookston. Now, he was at one time Chair of the House Transportation Finance Committee, now chaired by Representative Hornstein. I think Bernie's over 90 years old now. It's pretty remarkable. Drives down from Crookston and is just as sharp as can be. Senator Susan Kent was on the panel as well, and then Margaret Donahue from the Transportation Alliance. And that reminds me that what we're going to see, I think, coming to us in the form of a proposed resolution is support for a new organization that's being formed as a construct between some of the nonprofits, some of the big nonprofits, and some of the transportation alliance folks and other transportation entities, and an organization they're calling Move Minnesota, which wants to advance transportation funding in some form or fashion here, recognizing that over the next 20 years, we've got a projected $50 billion shortfall in transportation financing to cover just preservation, expansion of roads, bridges, and transit in our state. So stay tuned on that as well. And as soon as that resolution is prepared, I'll submit it for review and consideration by the council. And that's it for me. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of things. Councilmember Swenson already mentioned one of my reminders to you, and that's the December 10th special meeting. Expect a big crowd that night, so we hope you can all attend. November 21st, which is the day after tomorrow, the contractor who is going to dismantle the old Edina Realty Building will be moving into the site and will begin dismantling that building. Nobody's going to blow up the building. There are no explosives involved. It'll be orderly dismantling of the building. So 7 to 10. So seven to ten days and it'll be gone. Um, it'll be taken away from the site, there's some soil correction that we all know about. Hopefully that can be made and we can finish our, our, our transaction with the previous owners. Um, Councilmember Bennett and Councilmember Swenson noted the National League of Cities' Spring Convention. They have, uh, they do a, a fall and a, a spring event. Uh, the fall event typically is held somewhere around the country, and this year it was in Seattle. Uh, their spring congressional cities conference is always held in Washington DC, um, usually the first or second week of March. Uh, this week, uh, excuse me, next year, two thousand fourteen, that event is March eighth through the twelfth. And it's, it's really a, a, a great opportunity for, uh, city council members who have concerns on, on the federal level, and we do now with FAA and other, other issues, transportation issues, uh, to go to Washington, to have kind of a constructive, uh, opportunity to meet with agency heads and elected officials. And I would really encourage you to, to set, set aside some time on your calendar to, to make that trip in, in the spring. And we will give, uh, we'll put together more information for you about that. Uh, earlier this week, uh, earlier this week, Councilmember Brindle asked me if I would give you an update on where things stand with the, uh, the Hooton's Negotiations. Um, so I'll just give you a, a very summarized version. We, you know, we started the state mandated, um, negotiation, negotiating period, the sixty-day period on September eighteenth. Um, during this, during this time, since the start of that sixty-day period, uh, we've had the opportunity to talk with the, uh, the Parks and their representatives. Uh, we've discussed, uh, price, uh, we've discussed alternatives, creative solutions to how we might, uh, transact, uh, some kind of, of deal at that site. Um, we've offered them some ideas, they've given us some responses. Uh, we've received a cost estimate for remediating the soil contamination that we, uh, know is there. Uh, the city has provided a purchase offer, uh, that's been re-vetted by the council, uh, to the Parks. Uh, we've also offered them, uh, compensation to cover their out-of-pocket costs that they've incurred during this process. Uh, but to date, we've not had a response from them, um, on that offer, so we're still waiting for that. Uh, the, the, uh, the last thing that we've had some additional discussion on was that, uh, the Parks had requested an additional thirty days, um, so the sixty-day period was not a maximum, it was a minimum. And they've asked for thirty more days, uh, to, to have some additional conversation with us and, and to give some additional thought, I think, to their options. Uh, we've said that's good, we, we agreed to that. Uh, the next key date, though, is December eighteenth, and, uh, at that time, uh, we think the parties are gonna get together and at least have, uh, an additional discussion to find out if there's an alternative, uh, that's possible. So that's where, uh, that's where we are. So we're in the middle of that, that extension period. Uh, we're answering questions when they have questions, um, but that's the, that's the best I can share with you tonight. And that's all that I have.
Regarding the National League of Cities, I forgot one thing, uh, and, and folks may want to know about this, especially, uh, Anne and Joanie. Uh, tomorrow night, uh, the, uh, the League of Minnesota Cities is putting on a reception honoring St. Paul Mayor Chris Coleman, who is the new National League of Cities President, and that is beginning at five fifteen, uh, to six thirty. Um, it's three seventeen on Rice Park Event, at the Rice Park Event Center. So if you're interested in attending that, uh, recognition of Mayor Coleman as the new president of the National League of Cities, you're welcome to attend, and I'm gonna try to get over there. I've got one other evening, evening conflict, but I'm gonna try to get to both places, so...
Don't forget this.
Yep, we got a little bit more work to do. And thanks for the update on, on the Hooton's Cleaners, uh, project. I know they've had some discussions with, um, as Member Bennett said, a, another private interested party. Um, we don't know exactly where that is. Uh, the last I heard, uh, they had some preference for dealing with us, uh, relative, uh, relative to the private party, but we've gotta continue this dialogue, keep it open, and, um, keep visiting with them, and we'll be able to make some decisions here after, probably after the eighteenth, I take it.
And we'll do our best between now and then to ascertain the status of that.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Uh, anything else?
Oh, I forgot to mention the beer tasting, so there's the little flyer to your left.
All right. That is on Thursday, November twenty-first, that's the Edina Rotary Beer Tasting Event, Edina Morningside Rotary.
Andy Dino Liquor.
Andy Dino Liquor, it's at the Braemar Clubhouse, November twenty-first, five thirty to eight thirty. And, uh, there are quite a few, uh, local purveyors of beer that are gonna be there, and there's, will be food.
Bernatello's Pizza.
And, um, also, you know, a company owned by an Edina family. So, um, it's a great event and it's, uh, becoming more and more popular. I think this is the third year now, and it's, it's...
This is the third year.
Yep.
This is the third year. It's, uh, it's a fun fundraiser. Tickets are thirty-five dollars, you can buy them at the door. And, um, I think we have fourteen breweries coming, and the pizza is free, donated by Bernatello's for us to heat up in their ovens that they give us to use, and, uh, it's a lot of fun. So come on out for an hour or whatever and taste some different brews.
All right, and it is a great event, so...
It is a great event, a lot of fun.
...we should encourage people to attend. All right, um, we're gonna adjourn the council meeting, and then we're gonna reconvene as you, we've got one piece of work as a Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Um, city council meeting is adjourned. Now calling to order the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority, roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Brindle?
Here.
Commissioner Swenson?
Here.
Chair, how long?
Here. We've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda?
Second.
We got a motion to second on the meeting agenda discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay, carried. Uh, approval of minutes, uh, November fourth, two thousand thirteen meeting.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion to second on approving those minutes, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay, carried. And then the only piece of business in front of us this evening as an HRA is the, um, authorization for professional services for the Promenade Phase Four that, uh, direct, Manager Neal told us we needed to take care of both at the council level and the HRA level. Anybody have any questions for Manager Neal or Mr. Bittner regarding this matter? All right, is there a motion to authorize the executive director to sign a professional services agreement with URS Corporation?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion to second on that, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay.
Nay.
Carried, and, um, any other business for the HRA? We stand adjourned.
Excellent.
And we, we need a very...
So we gotta stop the taping?
Um, so we need...